To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could stay for one more minute. I messed up last week and I should have had a moment of silence for someone that we lost who was very important to this community, David Goodman. I can't really speak to him. Mary Ann did that in the paper unbelievably well. I will say that he didn't always agree with me, but he always let me know that he didn't agree with me when he didn't. He was a great guy. So I'd like to minute of silence for David, please. All right, we'll start out with the county commissioners.
I'm going to call the meeting of the county commissioners for Nantucket to order. So the only announcement is that this commission meeting is being video and audio recorded. Is there any public comment to come before the county commissioners tonight on items that are not on the agenda? Approval of minutes and warrants, could take one motion, is there approval of the minutes and warrants for January 24th and treasury warrants for January 2018?
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any commissioners' reports or comments? Hearing done, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Matt, it's all yours.
All right, thanks. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen to order. All right, is there anyone with public comment, not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, move on to announcements. Libby?
Thank you. This meeting is also being video and audio recorded. We're going to get an update from GPW director on the sewer force main assessment.
Good evening, Rob McNeil, GPW. The project is progressing nicely. As most of you know, the actual sewer break at South Beach Street was uncovered yesterday and removed. Take the coupon sample pipe was taken by the insurance agent, taken off island for testing. And the remainder of the pits are in various stages of excavation and/or investigation, cleaning, and repair. We did have a issue that has a video here of the actual break location. So you see where the plastic pipe separated within the cavity of the cast iron pipe, the outside. For scale, it was about a two-inch separation at the crown of the pipe. So we did run into an issue this afternoon on Main Street. There's a pit excavated that had been previously located with a defect in it that needed to be dug up to be repaired. And it was discovered that the equipment that does the underground locating was actually off. We don't know if it was from electrical interference or what, but it was about 20 feet off, which put the pit closer into South Water Street in the right turn lane. So we worked quickly with the sewer director, Erica, and the contractor and National Grid rep and some others to quickly, and our contractor Robert B. Hour, to make sure that that pit is able to be completed, dug up and completed prior to a pre-planned big move of National Grid equipment that's coming next week on Wednesday right now. So thankfully, we were able to get that done and avert any real issues there. Happy to answer any questions. We've been updating, as you see before you, there's some copies of the revised pit numbers with the actual pictures of the defects or breaks that have been located. There's been five locations right now where the pipe's been compromised, including the main break on South Beach Street.
Any questions?
Yeah, Rob, the one there on South Water Street, was that an actual separation as well?
South Water appears to be some sort of a slash to the bottom of the pipe. It's what you can tell from the camera, it's not always clear until it gets actually cut out. But right now, there's a number of utilities, not as, characterize it as not as crowded as South Beach Street, but there's also quite a bit going on in that South Water area. We also, in part of the dig safe markout process, we were reminded that there is a fire cistern out in front of the Pacific Club on the left-hand through lane on South Water, which is also sort of outside of the normal travel lane and so, travel path for the heavy trucks. So that's going to be plated to make sure that we have safe travel through there.
Rob, you said there's five areas that have been compromised. So is that the pits that you're digging and you're looking, you found five areas of...
Over the course of the pits that were dug to clean and camera the line, we've found a total of five different areas.
They're from beginning to end, different places?
That's right. And we'll get you, I know you're newly back, so welcome back daddy. I would say the updated maps show exactly the location and it has a photograph of the actual defect that's there. So these have been discovered by the camera crews as they've been going through and identified as extra pits that needed to be excavated to make those repairs.
And Rob, what does compromise mean? Is that a crack or is that...
No, typically the pipe is punctured in some way.
Punctured.
Yep.
And the one at South Water, is that just PE or is it PE in the iron as well?
South Water is PE. That's right, we haven't excavated that pit, but just upstream of that on Main Street, the pit that's 25 feet away, that's inside cast iron.
Cast iron, yeah.
This might be premature, or we might already know this, is there any public information sessions where the public can come to, or will there be in a month? Is it too early right now?
I think we're going to do something, we haven't scheduled it yet, but we're talking about either the first or second week. Libby, I know you were throwing some dates around.
Yeah.
First and second week in March, where we believe we will have pretty successfully transitioned from the recovery of the pipe and have started into the reconstruction of South Beach Street.
Okay, thanks.
That's all I have.
That's it? Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to give us the public information?
Sure.
Yeah.
So tomorrow night here again upstairs, it's the second of, right now, only two scheduled for the EZ Broad Street and now adding into that the continued discussion about South Beach Street sidewalk improvement project, projects, which is intended to pick up where the EZ Street improvements at the bulkhead left off. Here tomorrow night again, 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock. So we've previously advertised and sent out invites to all the abutters along the corridor for EZ and Broad, since South Beach Street was not originally intended to be part of this discussion, but just happened to be based on the timing here. So obviously, anyone's invited, it's public forum to seek information and input on what the future of these areas should look like.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Let me?
Well, the other announcement is that there's no selectmen's meeting next Wednesday, February 28th.
Okay, great. We've already done public comment. There's no new business that I know of, right? Approval of minutes, warrants, impending contracts?
Make a motion to approve the payroll warrants.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Treasury warrants?
Same.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Libby, you want to go through the contracts?
Sure. We have a grant that we've just received from the state. This is an annual grant, but our state representative and state senator, so Representative Fernandez and Senator Seer were here today and they did a little announcement about this at the shellfish propagation facility at Brant Point. So we thank them for their assistance in securing the grant again for us, $58,000. We have a couple of service agreements for the plus building, new carpeting, and a couple of office spaces and some painting with two different contractors, local, and an amendment to an agreement for GPW with Ludlow Memorial Company, Inc. This adds $9,800 to an original contract amount of $83,500 for the restoration of the Scontet flagpole. And funding for this portion of the project is coming from the community preservation area.
Okay, any questions?
I move a approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so voted. All right, we have consent items. Two yard sale parcels. If there are any questions or are we ready to...
Make a motion to approve consent item number one.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And make a motion to approve consent item number two.
And again, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. Okay, we're at citizen departmental requests. We have a request for transfer, consent or transfer of a lot, be Monomoy Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, Attorney John Brescher, representing 65 Monomoy Road LLC and 67 Monomoy Road, or excuse me, 67 Monomoy LLC, and the owners of the two parcels in question. What you have before you is one of those rare instances where there was a paper street bisecting these two properties. And it was Macy Avenue and the town conveyed those properties to the respective homeowners as part of the yard sale transfer. And then they took all the necessary steps and as part of the conveyance from the town to the owners is a restriction which says that no such, no part of such parcel or of the combined premises shall be hereafter used for non-residential purposes, nor divided, subdivided, or conveyed as separate parcel or parcels. And that was all well and good when they were separate owners. However, since 2014, as it turns out, the same underlying owner has purchased both properties. And he originally purchased 67 Monomoy Road and then has since purchased 65 Monomoy Road. 67 Monomoy Road as it exists now is an undersized lot of record and 65 Monomoy is an oversized lot of record. And so all he's looking to do is to convey a portion of 65 Monomoy to 67 Monomoy to create two conforming lots. That's the, and there is no additional subdivision. We went through the consent with town council and they are having all the owners also sign an agreement stating that the terms of the yard sale deed restrictions are still in full force and effect. In other words, that it cannot be further divided or subdivided or conveyed without basically approval from the Board of Selectmen. So what we are asking for this evening is the consent from the Board of Selectmen so that this conveyance can occur and that the restrictions will remain in full force and effect. And let me, please let me know if you have any questions.
Does the board have any questions?
I'd like to hear from Andrew, give his comments on this. And also, my recollection is, correct me if I'm wrong, that when we do the yard sales, we paid particular attention as the board on the opportunity to subdivide either currently or in the future. I'd like to hear his comment about the current state of affairs.
Right, so this, I support this particular application. This is exactly what we had hoped to get done. Here, we're removing a pre-existing non-conforming lot, bringing it into conformity. As John said, there's no new subdivision, basically both lots become the minimum size according to zoning. And the restriction is there, so you get to look at this and make sure you're satisfied that there isn't any, any further activity. So this, this actually fits exactly into intent.
While you, anyone else? All right. What's the difference, if there's an undersized lot, what's the process for the someone to, if there's an undersized lot in Monomoy, what's the process? What is the, what rights does the individual have?
They have the same rights as, as anybody, except the ground cover is calculated a little bit differently.
On the lesser amount?
It's 7% based on the land area with a 1,500 square foot minimum, okay? So, and the oversized would get 7% of its oversize. So basically, this evens it all out between the two. So it's 7% of the 40,000. So it's, it all works, the math here works out.
Right. Just, I mean, I'm going to, I'm probably going to vote in favor of this, but just so the newer board members realize, do you see the flag here that comes down this road here over? As a board, that way along here, that was, that was in the yard sale program. The board sold that, or they sold that to the abutters with the understanding it would be combined. It was placed in a different name, it wasn't combined, so we ended up with one more lot. At the time, this was part of why we ended up with a real estate committee. At the time, I wouldn't have supported that because, and I think as a policy, we have to think about, you know, because of the pressure on the harbor, we have to be thinking, you know, we have to be thinking about what we're doing. Do we want to be adding more lots? Do we want to be adding larger buildings and swimming pools and other things next to the harbor? And if in fact, some of these yard sales, they're making the lots more valuable and give us a little bit more money, not a lot, but then, you know, they're giving the homeowners a lot of value. So I think, you know, as a, as a policy, it's something I think we have to look a little closer at. And in this case, I'm not so sure that it's an issue at this point, but I think, but there's a lot of pressure, I think. And I don't know if I'm explaining myself very well, but I think the pressure is not necessarily, and the other question, this is a straight transfer, there's no, like, they're not selling to one another.
That's, that's correct. It's a, it's a straight transfer.
Yep.
And really, it's, the properties cannot be further subdivided, they don't have the land area, they don't have the frontage, it can't happen. It's really just to create two conforming lots or to make one non-conforming lot conforming while leaving the other one conforming.
But it does add economic value to the lot that's, that becomes conforming now.
Yes.
Well, because you can build a bigger house, correct? Is that what, if they had, if it was a separate owner with a non-conforming lot, there would be some reduction in the size, the footprint of the house?
Yeah, here you're taking, but remember, you're taking ground cover from the other lot and just transferring it so it's equal.
Which is only relevant because it's the same owner.
In this, in this particular one, there's a fact pattern, I don't want to prolong your discussion, but the other lot, which is not part of this, there's a fact pattern that's a little bit different, but again, it was separate, it did not touch it.
Right, well, we found that out after, yeah, we found that out after, we could go on, we could go into that for a while, but I just think the understand, you know, the thought is, I just think as a board, we have to be very careful that we aren't adding any more, A, that we're getting a fair deal, which, you know, sometimes we've sold these things and they were twice as valuable the next day. And so I think we didn't quite get enough, you know, so that's one question that we should continue to ask about. And B, you know, make sure, what is the ecological impact? You know, we don't want to be spending a lot of, you know, a lot of taxpayer time and money trying to sewer and help the harbor and then find out that all the swimming pools and all the other stuff that we're enabling with some of this is making it worse. So I just think it's, you know, those are my two issues when we talk about this.
So Matt, in two years, if they sell the lot that's non-conforming and becomes conforming, or if they sell that, are you going to feel that we got duped or...
No, not in this case, not, so they're going to sell it. I mean, if you look at that, you think about that, that, the house that's there is, is not the, you know, my sense, it's not the standard of what people expect now. That house will go away, there'll be something that will maximize that lot, that most likely will have a second dwelling and a pool, and it'll be the package that the buyers here are expecting. And so, you know, we as an island have to figure out, is that how, you know, that's great for business and, you know, and we're getting some pretty good taxes, but I think there's also some impacts that we haven't quite understood of some of these developments into the wetlands and, you know, it, there's a lot, the pools go in the wetlands, I've talked about that at length. I think there's a lot of things that we really need to think through. So, anyway, do we have a motion on this?
Move to accept this request.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right. This one should be relatively easy. This is a Nantucket Education Trust consent for a mortgage, two and four coupon.
Make a motion to approve this item.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second?
I'll second.
All right.
Aye.
All right, we're all set, thank you. All right. All right, we have a request from the town clerk for appointment to the Board of Registars to fill David Goodman's position. And I think in our packet... It's Susan, yeah, yeah. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Move to approve the request?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. And that's Susan Carey, was whoever you called.
Right.
All right, now we're into public hearings. The first is a public hearing to consider utility petition, plan, it's on Wall Street. Verizon on Wall Street.
Yes, we're looking to install a handhold in the public way and tunnel under roadway.
Jim, are you doing Verizon's too? Because this is a Verizon one.
Yep, yeah, we've got Verizon on Wall Street. Is there a representative from Verizon here?
Okay.
We have to open the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, well, it is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing.
I don't care to say that or not.
Yeah, we do. All right. Or is there anyone who wants to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's, what does the board have any thoughts on this?
I thought Mike's, Mike Burns' comments were, you know, there's nothing they can really do about that vegetation having to be cut down, right?
Well, some of it we can request, I mean, it's, and I think the comments, we can vote this with the, you know, understanding these comments will be addressed. I mean, that's the normal.
Yeah, typically you approve it with the departmental comments attached, so.
Would it be common, I think it says a significant amount of this vegetation, is it ever something that we say and some of it has to be replaced? I mean, it's vague, I don't know if that's even, I don't know how significant it was.
It really depends on if it's within the roadway or if it's on private property. We can't obviously make them replace it if it's on private property. So, and this map doesn't really clearly indicate where vegetation is, so.
A lot of times, a lot of times we're trying to take the vegetation because of the sightlines, we're trying to cut it back a lot of times, so. This one does.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
All right, you got a second?
Second, with department, department comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks. All right, now we're on a utility petition, National Grid, 20 Wall Street.
Jim Huxley, National Grid. Yes, we're looking to install a handhold next to pole six and then tunnel under the roadway to feed a house at number 20 for electric service.
All right, this, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public? All right. I guess I, I'll open it and close it. All right. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Do we need to make note of Mike Burns' request again there because he asked about relocating utility pole six out of the encroachment of the driveway?
It's about a Verizon set and I notified Mike that he's going to have to contact Verizon to see about the pole moved.
I mean, we can't condition one application saying that you need a petition for another pole to be removed, they're, they're really separate.
Okay.
So I understand that there's an existing utility pole located there, but there's been no request to move it, that I know of.
So Mike is more just bringing it to our attention, but there's nothing we can actually do.
Right.
Okay. I make a motion to approve with the same note of comments from the department heads.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number three, petition for National Grid, 252 Maticat Road.
This is our second portion of petition. First half was approved last week to run conduit along Maticat Road and then tunnel under the roadway to feed the existing service legally fed from Hockensaw Ravno.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public? I'm opening it. If you'd like to come up, come on, Ben.
Hey, Ross, I'm in a butter, 254 Maticat Road. And my question is, I tried to contact National Grid, which didn't go very well, and I want to know how that service is impacted for 254 Maticat Road.
Okay. Jim, can you answer that to help us?
Oh, yes, if everything's approved and National Grid will be installing a new service from that handle at National Grid's expense.
Does that answer it, Hank?
To both properties or just the 250?
Oh, there's three, three properties, 250, 252, 254. That's if, there may be negotiations between existing homeowner who's, three illegal services cross, if it doesn't go through then.
And how, when you call these illegal services, is this just something that's been there for a long time or what's the...
Two of them have been there a long time, one's been there about five years.
Okay. Does that answer it? All right. Is there anyone else before I close the public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. The next is a public hearing to hear the new application, hotel license for Hotel Pippa.
Hello. This application is for the location at 5 Chestnut Street. Was formerly the Vanessa Noel Hotel and Bar until last year. So it's going to be a similar license. The owner is the operator of Crosswinds out for a year, so it's someone with experience on Nantucket. The business is going to be a similar license as far as being an inholder, all alcohol licensed. One difference is they are asking for an annual license, the former license was seasonal. The one note, as far as permits on the location, is timing. Originally, the closing time was 10:30 PM, that was allowed to be extended until 12:00 midnight, so service should be until 12:00 midnight, no later than that, based on a zoning board of appeals in 2012. So the license will be for the rooms and the cafe as it was in prior case as well, and that's both at 5 Chestnut Street and 33 Center Street are the locations of the, are the two addresses. And again, I had mentioned in the comments too, we do this in a similar location where like Queequeques in town are under two different addresses and have one main base, so that's, has precedence there. No objections to this license application, everything is, is in order. Will, of course, after this have to go to the state and then go through all the health, fire, and building inspections before issuing a final license. They are here this evening, I don't believe there's going to be any major changes, but again, as far as occupancy and all sorts of setups will be with the final inspections and that sort of thing. Any questions, Matt?
Does the board have any questions?
Is this a new operator or a new property?
Yes, it was sold, property was sold. Yes, correct. Former owner Vanessa Noel, who operated that hotel, and then this new owner, is the same owner who operated Crosswinds for a year. So again, someone from Nantucket, yes.
And there's no difference between the previous liquor license?
Nope, the only difference is they're looking for an annual versus seasonal, and as I mentioned, as long as they understand that that is annual, before it was only April 1st to January 15th, that any sort of closure for any extended period of time needs to go through approval and hopefully will amend that too as well. So that would be the only difference.
This is a public hearing? So if there's any... So if there's anyone from the public would like to speak? All right, come on down.
My name is Mitch Carl. I represent the Chestnut House, which is a direct butter to the property we're in question here. I may be, and this may be the wrong venue for this, but my concerns are regarding cigarette bites and loitering. This may be better addressed during the fire building and health portions of their permit. But I wanted to go on the record as saying that because of the location of their building and ours, our entrance to our building, there's a small little patio area where the public, our public hopefully is welcome to sit and enjoy the front yard. When Vanessa Noel was in business, quite often what people would do is loiter out front of our entrance, smoking cigarettes and depositing their cigarettes everywhere. And then folks that were queuing up to, to use the sushi bar would come and relax and sit in our, on our property. So that's our main concern when considering any licensing going forward. It's just the consideration of our property and our guests.
All right, great. Thank you. Amy, do you want to address that?
Absolutely, and I can address that with the owners too and inspections and that sort of thing. Absolutely, that's something certainly conditions we can put on, make sure that that is, that is noticed. But that's, you know, a good thing to notice for sure, that they should be, you know, aware of that, especially if they have a line queued up as far as their neighbors.
And be good neighbors.
Yes, no, absolutely. I, I think they will be, so it's a good thing for us to know. So we appreciate that.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. All right, and the board, any comments?
I'm fine with it.
As long, yep, as long as those additional comments get on. Yep, I would move to approve with those additional comments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, before you move on, can you just do the request for determination that it won't affect the spiritual activities of the local churches nearby?
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved that it.
That it will not affect the spiritual.
Spiritual.
There you go. All right, in a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. All right, now we're going to, hearing to consider application for entertainment license for Hotel Pippa.
So for the same properties as we, we mentioned, the previous licensee did not have an entertainment license, which is something we saw in a lot of instances in some places that didn't have live entertainment, but it should. Anything with liquor type of situation with music or any, even just background needs to have an entertainment license per regulation. So we're bringing them up to that. It's basically just going to be background music in the cafe area. They do have an adjacent patio between the buildings, but they're not looking for speakers or outdoor music for that or live entertainment. It's a small space. So it's bringing them up to code for that and for the background music in that location.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone like to speak to that? Come up to the mic, please.
Mitch Carl, representing the Chestnut House and Direct to Butter. We have no issues with it other than we understand that you say that there won't be any outdoor music, but I would love it to be written into something that says no outdoor music.
Yeah, it'll, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. In the conditions of the license, it will, the premises will be defined and no speakers or anything of such outdoors. And I don't believe that's what they want. Just an area for folks to sit outside, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? If not, I'd like to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
I had a couple of questions for Amy. I know in other situations we've, especially when it there's, it looks like there's some very close proximity to this other inn and people may be sleeping and what can we do to make sure? I know we've talked about windows closed and those kinds of things.
Right.
What kind of conditions can we put on to make sure the other guests can?
Right, so conditions basically in that area are going to be windows and doors closed with any music internally at 10:00 PM. Obviously, this is an inn too, so they have guests that they don't want to disturb as well. So it's just going to be background music in that cafe area. So there wouldn't be any speakers allowed in the outdoor area or projection outside as well, so.
But inside?
Correct, it'd be inside only.
Those are doors are closed at 10:00 PM?
Yeah, and that's general for the downtown area for a lot of those establishments, but, and certainly we would put that condition in the entertainment license.
Okay, anyone else?
Make a, make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think the establishments nearby are going to be more of a noise issue for places around there, not Hotel Pippa.
No. Okay, next public hearing is for new mobile food unit license for Marshall Thomas out at 160 Surfside.
Yes, so this is a location, as, as you may remember, last year we awarded again another five-year contract for Surfside Beach Shack to Marshall Thompson, who had been the previous concessionaire as well. Part of that plan, this is from last year as well, that part of the contract allowed for operation of a mobile food unit by the concessionaire. And this was agreed to last year where we have the MFU there on the side of the building, where we also cleared out a space for picnic tables and, and folks to be able to sit and eat in that area. So all this is, he had a previous relationship with the Enjoy Kitchen Mobile Food Unit. They are unable to service the location this year, so Marshall has gotten his own mobile food unit. It's gone through all health plan review regulations and that sort of thing. So this is just asking for a license for that vehicle. It's not an additional vehicle. Still, there won't be anything other than this vehicle there. It's replacing what was there last year.
Okay, great, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to talk about this? Seeing none. All right, the board have any questions?
I had one. I'm sure I'm making the assumption that this footprint is not the, to scale footprint of this unit.
Correct.
Could you describe where it, where it would be and the size of it?
Yes, I think I have this size. So where it says MFU on that, right here. Here is the shack right here, Surfside where the concession is. And then the mobile food unit here is on, there's a grass area here where we evened it out and put some picnic tables. Fencing up in this area, we have, we added handicapped spaces here, repainted them, did all that here. And then the mobile food unit just goes in this space here. It does not stick out past these parking spaces at all. I just put that there so you can see it a little bit better, but it's the same size unit. This is just really replacing it. Part of this contract is able to put a mobile food unit down there.
And what's the, what are the dimensions of a?
Eight by 28.
Eight by 28?
Yeah.
Here's the, here's the picture.
Got it. Page eight. So it fits in the space that we have alongside the picnic area as of, like we had last year. So it doesn't take up any additional spaces. It's already marked, the space is marked for mobile food unit parking only already.
And what is the seating area for the picnic area?
The seating area?
The seating, or number of seats for the?
I believe it's no more than 20, their picnic table type of seats. There's maybe four. So depending on how many people you can put on some of the benches there.
So you have a limit of 20?
Yeah, yeah, based on, you know, obviously we have restrooms there too as well, but I think maybe maximum, you could probably squeeze a couple more. But I think it's four tables. It's a small area fenced in too as well.
I, I think it's a great idea. It's a great service to be added to people who are going to that beach. And it was already done last year.
Correct.
And I never heard one problem, one peep.
No, we didn't have any. It was good. And again, and the one thing I just, it made me remember to point out is hours that we agreed on last year was no, no later than 8:00 PM or sunset. So it won't be any service after dark or anything of that sort.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second?
Did you close?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. Okay, and now we're going to open the public hearing for an entertainment license at the same location.
Yes, so we have not had an entertainment license out at this location before. So this is going along the lines of now we have this area where folks can sit down and eat, small area with these tables outside. The request from the concessionaire is to be able to have some limited entertainment. It's not an every night thing from about 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Possible, you know, acoustic guitar singers, that sort of thing in that area. The request that was submitted, and I asked them to submit everything they wanted and we can pare down as we saw fit, would have portable speakers with them hooked up to the entertainment. I know we've had some concerns from neighbors. There are close neighbors and we did receive two letters from that.
They didn't.
Okay, great. We had two letters from neighbors, obviously concerned with the noise and carrying a noise. So similar things that we've done are just allowing acoustic music, meaning even no hookup into any sort of speaker. If that is allowed, that it is projected towards the water area. Secondly, it's certainly a condition that this is not going outside of the seated area. There's not going to be things in the parking lot. Those are handicap spaces next to it. They obviously understand that, that this isn't going to go out into the parking lot. That would be certainly a condition. Certainly you want to have a guitarist or someone in the corner playing with the folks there. I think the recommendation wise, if this is approved, again, the hours would be only till 8:00 PM at the latest or sunset. Acoustic and in that seated area only.
Great, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public? All right, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Arthur Reed, representing the letter writers that we've just spoken of, Jim Mullen and Stephen Rupitsky. They are very much concerned about this entertainment license. They didn't object to and don't object to the food service operation out there. We think that's a reasonable thing, as has been in the past, to meet the needs of the people out there at the beach. However, entertainment is a whole different situation. We're dealing with a residential area here. There are a number of residences in close proximity. And the music that would be generated by this, particularly if it's amplified, but we object to any of this. We think that it will have an adverse impact upon the residential area. It will be heard by the neighbors. It'll interfere with their privacy and their enjoyment of their residential property. I can easily see a situation, regardless of what the concessionaire may do, in which if this attracts a large crowd, you may well have many more people there than the location can readily handle. Spilling out into the parking lot, spilling out into the handicap spaces, spilling out into the, into the whole area. We think that frankly, there's enough entertainment out there for people to be able to look at the beach, look at the natural conditions, look at the open ocean, look at the seabirds. I think that's a lot better entertainment than having amplified music or in fact, any music at all on the site. And we would hope that you would deny the entertainment license. We wish the concessionaire the best as far as the food service is concerned, but we think that this is just too much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, other selectmen, I'm an attorney, Kevin Deale. I represent Jerry Schwartz and Heather Reisman, who live directly next door to the locus where this is going to occur. In simple terms, they prefer to support what the selectmen want to do here. And to follow your recommendation that if there's going to be music, that it be unamplified music, acoustic only without speakers. So again, my clients support you and support the decision you make tonight.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Come on down to the mic.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, Marshall Thompson. I'm the concessionaire. And I realize that an entertainment license and the concerns of neighbors that were brought up, you know, are very valid. I just want to say a couple of things that I brought a visual aid, by the way. This is the sound system here that I'd be putting out there, so I wouldn't be cranking out any loud rock and roll. And I'd be very sensitive to, if I was disturbing the neighbors, I would, I wouldn't do it anymore. So if, I'd say that upfront, if I do get granted the entertainment license and start having the live local musicians play in there, which is what I would like to do, and it really, you know, proved to be disturbing the neighbors, I wouldn't do it anymore. And I wanted to point out that I've been presenting live music with local musicians here on the island for about 40 years. First at the Club Car, then at the Even Keel, and at the Jetties. And have always been responsible in that in terms of not disturbing the peace. And I'm a musician myself and believe in supporting the live, the, the local artists. And that's who I'd be hoping to have for the occasion, or maybe songwriters circle or that kind of thing, where we could have some entertainment for the community that wasn't in a bar. So, you know, that was my idea. It's, it's not integral to my actual food service thing. I was just trying to, you know, provide some fun music out there. So I'll bow to your opinion on whether or not to give it to me or not, but I just wanted to present that to you.
Great, thanks.
Show you that it's not going to be real loud and be pretty peaceful.
Anyone on the board have any questions for Marshall Isaiah?
So Marshall, it sounds more like this is occasional events as opposed to every night of the week or Fridays, every Friday, Saturday even.
I don't really have a complete plan, you know. All the years that I've had out there, you know, I used to have Jetties and we did live music there with the local guys. And so I know a lot of the local musicians and now that I'm just out there at Surfside, it's just something, it's a passion of mine. So I've often thought about having it out there and I would want to do it, obviously, without permission. And that's why I knew I was coming before you for the mobile food unit license tonight and thought I would ask whether it was something that was even possible. And, you know, if I get granted it, my plan is to just do it occasionally. You know, maybe a couple of nights a week, like I said, you know, maybe an open mic or something like that, but that's, that's, that's the intent.
And do you see amplification being essential?
You know, as a musician playing your guitar in the outdoors, you can't hear it very well if you don't give it a little bit of amplification. So I probably wouldn't do it if I couldn't have that little sound system there. But, but if you want to grant it without having amplification and I try it and it works, I would appreciate that. But I'd like to be able to amplify it, you know. I think it used to be on the application, you just put whether you're having acoustic music, which is, you know, that's what these are acoustic instruments. But, you know, you've got to mic them up a little bit and if you're going to have a singer and also just to, just to truly enjoy it out there, you know, to a certain distance, but not too far, so.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. All right, discussion of the board?
I think the applicant did a very good job when, when they were at Jetties. Every, the music they had there was very, was tasteful, so I've seen them do it well. But I think this particular place right now hasn't, has never seen amplified music before and it seems maybe a little much. So I was, I was going to suggest having just acoustic, but then Marshall said it probably wouldn't work with, without having amplification. So I understand the neighbor's concerns, so I'm not real, I'm not, I'm not for amplification at this point.
And our recommendation is to not have amplification.
Right, that's their, but I, I have one question for Amy.
Yeah.
Could they apply for one weekend to try amplification out?
We can, we, we've discussed that. There, there are some instances where some folks are allowed to request additional things to a license in one, one time, two time, whatever it is. We can put that condition on there. it is, we can put that condition on there. I mean, that, this is a local license, that's up to you to...
Would still come here, right, for that one weekend if they wanted to try it, or would it just be up to you?
Well, we can put that condition on, it's something if you want to try that. We have other licenses, whereas you have something that's usually background music, a couple of licenses have the ability to come before you to have a DJ twice a year, or have some sort of amplification that they don't normally get to have for New Year's or whatever it is. So you can put a condition that there can be a couple of times they can have a special event with that, but they would have to come before you to say, yeah, that's fine. So, but up to you.
So I think Marshall's done an outstanding job out there, providing a great concession air food, food product. I'm with Jason, I have concerns about, I'm not against change, but it's, it's a pretty significant change, the dynamics of Surfside Beach, and I know I go back, you know, many years, but I had a concern last year about this, about developing, you know, a seating grid, and I think that now that we have another application for entertainment, I see it as a opportunity for people to go out there for, you know, for that event, and not just, not just because they're there to enjoy the beach. And I just think it really changes the flavor of the, of Surfside Beach, and so those are the concerns I have.
Yeah, I'd be along the same lines, and wanting to see if there, see how significant the impact was before, perhaps looking at the full entertainment license, and same respect to Marshall for being a responsible business owner concessionaire, and really appreciating that if there was a disturbance that he would stop, but, so I don't know if there's a way to find that balance between being able to see what the impact would be without putting anyone out. And it, to me, it makes a big difference that it's not every single night, if it's occasionally, and I think there's a point to be made, having something that does not revolve around alcohol is actually kind of nice.
I guess the question is, do we want to begin to have, offer entertainment at Surfside Beach, and I don't know, and I, I'm less likely to do that, and, and not saying this is going to happen, but, you know, we have one, one year with signed seating, next year we have entertainment, and what's to say, we don't have an application for alcohol license next year, so that's where I, that's why I have the position I've stated.
You feel it's a slippery slope if we keep going?
You know, I mean, I have all the respect in the world for Marshall, I just, I just don't, I don't think, it's a road I, I prefer not to take right now.
I wonder if it's more of a slippery slope where other food trucks then, I look, is that a possibility, where if there's one food truck with...
Well, is, the way the contract, we're in its town property, is that only a concessionaire can operate a food truck at that location, so this would be it. We would have to go in and redo that or make an addition, so no other food trucks can't come into that area, yeah.
Or no at other locations, if there's food trucks at other locations, can they come for an entertainment license?
Well, it depends on the location, you know, food trucks, like if they're at a beach or something of that sort, yeah, let's, maybe there's one pin horse box we don't want to open, but yeah, everything depends on the location, yeah.
No, and I'm, I'm sort of, I do think there is a creeping commercialism that happens, people bid and the next guy bids a little higher because he can get something, he thinks he can do something else, and then they, and that's what's happened. I mean, I grew up down at the Jetties, and it was a hamburger place, and over time, you know, liquor was added, and then entertainment, and before you know it, it's a full-blown entertainment center. And, you know, so I think there is a, Jim is making a valid point, so, and then I think that is the issue really in front of the board. I mean, at most I would consider doing it, you know, on a trial basis, you know, six or eight times this summer with no, you know, no acoustics, no amplification, that's where I would kind of come out on it.
We can pick, we can certainly do that, pick a number, or pick once a week, once a month, to try it this summer and see how that goes, with certain conditions on it, or a trial period, temporary entertainment. Again, you want to set those standards, we can certainly do that.
One of the, here's another question, that, when you guys must have talked about this, well, how's the parking in that area, is it at full all day long?
Yeah, I mean, at the height of the season, sure. Those spaces right out front, depending on, those are all handicapped where the location is, with the, there's a fence, obviously, in the small seating area, and it's fenced off before those five handicap spaces. So it's a fenced-in area, then a little bit opening where the mobile food unit, so it's basically, has the shack on one side, the mobile food unit on the other, and fencing and parking.
I guess what I'm asking is that lot itself, you know, pretty, is that full from what time to what time every day?
Yeah.
Marshall might know it better than we do, but...
It's full, it's full.
Yeah, it is.
It's always full, so we know that.
All right.
And when you have people coming for entertainment, they've got the, people play the instruments, they're being on the band, and all that stuff, that's just more...
Yeah.
To answer that question, it's full in the daytime for sure, because that is what, you know, it's been mostly for the beach-going public that goes during the daytime. And, you know, one of the things that we did last year is we started being open to ate, because we thought it would be a nice, you know, you know, obviously to help build our business, we, you know, maybe we should see whether there was people wanting to come out there for dinner, for a casual, low-priced dinner at the beach, because it is such a beautiful spot. And we had a lot of, not a lot, but a nice return on that, mostly locals, because I didn't advertise it or anything, and, you know, at those picnic tables, it was kind of nice, because that's who you'd be seeing out there. But, you know, I'm trying to grow that business a little bit with the music, but in terms of the parking, it's full in the daytime, but not after 4:00, 4:30.
Okay, so it sort of slows down.
There's plenty of room, so, you know, I wouldn't, you know, the idea that it would turn into a big crowd out there, you know, would make my heart sing, of course, but I don't really think that's going to be happening, but I, I understand the concerns, but it's not real busy at night.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion to, sorry, do you have anything else to say?
Nope.
To approve with the recommendations from licensing from Amy.
Okay.
I don't want to muddy anything up, so if they want to come back and have them play music for a weekend, and then come back for that, but I kind of like it as it is.
All right, do we have a second for that?
No amplification, sorry.
Certainly, if this works, we can sit together and maybe put together an outline for you as to maybe what would work, as far as number of dates or trying this out, if that, if you feel like this is, or if you just want to go ahead with just acoustic, I mean, we can do that.
A motion.
Yeah.
My motion is just to...
Yep, okay.
Yeah, no, we've got a motion, yeah.
Nobody's...
Jason, and you're just, that was a motion to approve it as recommended.
Just acoustic, which is probably nothing.
All right, do I have another motion?
Make a motion that we deny the application. And then if we want to come back and do something else, we have an application in front of us, we either approve it or don't approve it, and if we want to come back with something different, that's, would be up to the applicant to come back.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Just to clarify, I suppose what I'm looking for is, I'm somewhere in between the two motions at the moment, as in I'd like to see some, some specification of two, three, four times a summer, something like that, some sort of trial. So what you're saying, Jim, is that we deny, but that could be something that they could come back for, is that correct?
We can't really have conversation if we don't have a second.
I suppose I'm just asking...
Second for discussion.
I've already done that.
So...
Yes.
Second for discussion, then, so that was my discussion point.
Okay, there's your discussion.
So what was your question?
What I'm, what I'm looking for is something in between the two, seeing if there's some sort of trial period. I do think that being respectful of the neighbors and of the natural beauty of the area, and not wanting to do a slippery slope, if there's anyone that I would trust to have a look at this would be Marshall, so looking for something that was a specified number of times in the summer.
For acoustic?
For acoustic, and take it from there.
As I said, they'd come back and make an application to do that.
Or we can...
I think what, you know, one of the, I mean, Marshall kind of alluded to it, this, this is a way to, you know, help his, help his food business, and, and people are probably, you know, may likely be come out for that event, to come out and not use the beach, and I just was concerned about another restaurant kind of operation with entertainment out and, you know, out with, who are drawing people for that, rather than people just going to the beach, which was the original kind of concession thinking.
Amy, is it, is the cleanest way to do it is to, just to deny it, and then you guys work on it, come back with something else?
Yeah, I think so, what, what I'm discussing right here is the option of continuing the hearing with, I don't know how that works, or do I have to re-advertise and redo, you know, do that whole process, so that, that's my concern and my question, and that, is that you have...
We don't have an application.
We've done that before.
Yeah.
We did that with the White Elephant, you had conditions for me, and said, can you come back with further recommendations? We continued the hearing and did so again in a couple of weeks to, to your specifications.
We've already closed the public hearing.
But I closed the public hearing.
Okay, okay, that was my question.
We could make a motion to reopen it.
We can make a motion to reopen it, and then continue it if we have to.
It'd be helpful to the applicant, I think, if we can do it in that.
Or the other option is we could, you know, deny denying it, and we could have, and we could do something in between, and you could make a motion that's somewhere in between and see if that's get support. Because I don't see, I don't feel the support to deny it outright, so, so, so let's vote on that, is, we've got, you know, we've got a motion to deny, you, you seconded it for discussion, are you still?
I'm, I'm done discussing, I'm ready for a vote.
Okay.
So...
So one motion, one vote to deny, do I have a second?
Oh, oh, sorry, I was...
The motion's been made and seconded.
It's been seconded, okay.
Now we need to vote on it.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm not. All right, so it, so it doesn't pass?
Yeah.
So, right, so three days, you were opposed?
I was opposed...
Who voted, what was the vote?
I was opposed to the denial.
Yes.
It was a one-three.
Yeah, one-three.
Oh, okay.
Or two-two, whoever you want to look at.
I thought it was two, okay.
All right, so... I didn't know one. Okay, so it's one-three, okay. All right, do we have another motion?
So, the motion I would make is that we would approve with a specified number of dates included in the recommendation.
Specified number of dates for acoustic?
For acoustic.
What, what's the...
Yeah.
Six, I'm just thinking July and August, if, that's eight weeks.
Yep.
If, or, four, I'm just trying to think if it's, I'm considering it a trial period, so six, and if they don't go well, if the neighbors come back to us, then...
And then we revisit it next year at the same time, when we did the licensing? All right, so we have a motion for...
So motion to approve as recommended with six nights allowed for acoustic.
Yes, that's the motion.
Second.
Do you have a second? Okay. Yes, all right, anyone want to discuss it? All right, let's vote, all who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who's opposed? Three to one. Okay, thank you. We have a public hearing to consider amendments to the commercial landfill user fee schedule. Brian?
Good evening, so this year we're recommending, after some analysis, that we increase the fees by 2%, which is where we believe that CPI will ultimately end up based on research and listening to the Fed talk about where they think it's going to go. So we have the current fees, which for Class 1 are 192, we propose taking them to 196, Class 2A from 383 to 391, Class 2B from 755 to 770, Class 3 from 1,510 to 1,540, and then Class 4A and, 4A from 82 and 21 to 84 and 22 per guest room, and Class 4B, 82 and 21 plus the Class 3 fee, to $84.22 per guest room, and then 1540 as well. And then I think the next page has a breakdown of what the, what those fees are broken out as. And then, I will note, the last time that we actually did increase this was during 2015, which was part of fiscal '16, so we didn't increase them last year.
Thank you. Any questions for Brian while he's here? All right, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none? All right, the board?
Close the public hearing.
Like, I'll close the public hearing, does the board like to speak? Any comments?
I don't think they, don't look too surprising, it seems pretty...
No, it's pretty straightforward, yeah.
All right, my only, I make this comment every time, you're probably, you're probably used to it, I would like to, A is, is sometimes I wonder about the equity between, you know, some of the places that are classified as markets with under 10,000 square feet, they're doing way more business, some other people who are classified as restaurants, et cetera. I also think we should be really looking at what other users are out there that aren't paying anything.
Right.
And I think, you know, we come up, we come up against this every year, some of the people here, the markets and the restaurants and the ends, we're all easy targets, but I think there are other people who could contribute as well, some who, who do a lot more, contribute a lot more to the landfill in this town, and so I, you know...
And I will say that the DPW director and I have had brief conversations now about looking at this, and it was something that the prior administration, our DPW director and I were going to look at, but obviously with the, the changeover, this is something that we've discussed looking at, and, and taking those, those comments into consideration.
Yeah, thank you, I just, I think it comes up every year, the easy thing is to do what we've always done, and add a little bit and move along, I think the hard work is to figure out, you know, where else can we be looking and how to do this fairly, so. Is there anyone else on the board have a comment? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're at Town Managers Report, review of the South Beach Street Road and Sidewalk Reconstruction Options.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so the DPW director's going to take us through this, and as we get ready to reconstruct South Beach Street, a couple of issues have come up about whether or not we ought to think about some sidewalk work that is different than what exists there now, to address some traffic and other issues. So the idea here is to review those options with the board, obviously, the initial option would be to put everything back as is, but through some discussions, DPW has come up with a potential additional option, and that's been discussed around a bit. I think we want to get some idea of what, what, where to go with this sooner rather than later, because we need to get, as soon as the assessment is done and repairs can be made to the sewer line, we need to get that road back into service as quickly as possible.
All right, okay, Rob, you'd like to?
Thank you. So I want to thank all the folks that have participated in the sidewalk improvement session in January, as well as everybody who has hunted me down and given me their opinion about how this ought to go. There's certainly a lot here, a lot to be discussed, and, if you could zoom out just a little bit, I'd say, I'd start off by saying, you know, this is not the Rob McNeil plan, and it's not exactly the way, it's actually, this plan that's shown up here is actually substantially different than what's out there today. But what it does is, it recognizes that this is sort of a unique opportunity to take a look at South Beach from C Street at the top of the page. Thank you. From C Street to, all the way through to Oak Street, and this piece here is the South Beach Street from C Street to Broad, and basically, if we start looking from this point down, the plan would maintain the parking along this side of South Beach, and introduce a new crosswalk at the apex of the road, sort of the elbow of the road, rather, where the alignment starts to change, to, to heighten the awareness of the drivers coming through this area, and provide the highest degree of sight distance to the people crossing. Under this scenario, this would actually do something very different from what's out there today, as I mentioned, it's, recognizes that we have two sidewalks out there today with a very narrow 18-foot roadway, we've all driven it, and we've all walked through that area, and there's a lot of different challenges. We are faced with handling all... kinds of users of this corridor and across Broad Street as well. So we're, we're taking a look at a lot of the side streets, the main avenues. But this here is our reverse truck route. So it serves primarily down, you know, from Maticat Cliff Road, down Eastern, and then to the, to the Steamship on Broad Street. So that in and of itself, sort of takes the priority since trucks are sort of our lifeline here. And so, recognizing the 18-foot narrowness of the road, the thought was to bump up to 22 feet. Well, 22 feet in, in any sidewalk in that right of way would really be too much. So, we, the whole process seeks to find a balance between all the users. So the widened roadway would, under this scenario, would go from 18 feet to 20. So, two extra feet, loosen it up enough so that trucks opposing each other, you know, trucks with trailers or boats and/or just cars that are not used to driving on 18-foot wide roadways feel a bit more comfortable. And trucks don't have to pull up on the sidewalk, impeding pedestrians to let others go by. So with the 20-foot wide roadway, then the remainder would be for sidewalk. If we ran, if we just widened one foot either side to gain that, we would, we have some problems with that because we have utility poles on the, I believe it's the west side, thank you. So we have a number of utility poles on the west side, and just shaving into those don't work. What we were able to do under this plan was to essentially realign the roadway right along the Yacht Club property, keeping about two and a half feet off the building, putting, placing a high curb along that building to protect the building from trucks. And the sidewalk that would be lost on this side along the Yacht Club property would be gained on the opposite sidewalk. And we would have a sidewalk that would extend from the crosswalk here, would be, it would be widened to nine feet and run along the Yacht Club on this side property at nine feet to Whalers Lane, come through it, and would actually get wider than nine feet, starting at Whalers Lane, and widen out to almost 12 feet at the backside of the Whaling Museum. This effort allows us to introduce handicap accessible ramps at all the different intersections. And for today, the C Street intersection is essentially where the pavement limits would be on the north side. What's that? Sure. The second crosswalk coming south would be, again, to the Yacht Club. There's an existing crosswalk that goes into the Yacht Club driveway. It would be shifted down to align better with the Whalers Lane sidewalk, as well as with the Yacht Club's own walkways and ramp system into their building. The crosswalk would continue down South Beach. And then the lines you see here, it's back of sidewalk, existing edge of side gutter line, the proposed gutter line, the other existing gutter line. So that's the 18 feet. And then this would be the proposed gutter line with the 20 feet here. So there's a strange situation that occurs here with the Steamship. So the Steamship curb is here, and the other is here. They store three lanes of trucks here. And they have a chain that runs across two bollards at the backside here, essentially to prevent folks from coming in, driving in here. And so we have a sidewalk that currently begins here, but it ends off back here. And there is no physical connection or painted connection, anything. Oftentimes, you see, sort of, this is no man's land, even though some people realize that there's a sidewalk there and go ahead and use it. During the summer, there's a lot of confusion. People hang out here and try to figure out what they're going to do next. So this plan tries to address that by eliminating this and creating a nice wide vista of brick, brick crosswalk here. And brings everybody over to a much larger brick vista next to the Whaling Museum, and then invites them up this much wider sidewalk to then eventually cross halfway down if they needed to get to the east side of the road. This is the new front edge of the road, where the existing one's back a bit. It still allows ample truck turning movements in both directions to allow for the truck, reverse truck route into the Steamship, as well as boats and other vehicles, buses and such to be able to turn out onto Broad. And essentially, as we cruise through to South Beach Street Extension, it's a few different changes around the intersection that include slightly raising this intersection to be flush with the existing surrounding sidewalks. Essentially, that would give a nice, smooth transition from sidewalk, crosswalk to sidewalk. Again, handicap accessibility gets addressed. And we're able to use what's sort of a shared space between pedestrians and vehicles and bicycles that are coming through this intersection. Same thing applies on the South Beach Extension side, where just outside of Walters, this new bump out of brick would be flushed down with the pavement, surrounded with granite that's flush with the pavement, to show people that it's okay to stand there to order a sandwich. But if it's a reverse truck route situation where the parking's down, trucks would be able to drive through here unimpeded. And similar type thing would occur on the corner of the Juice Bar here at South Beach Extension in Broad, where we would have newly installed handicap accessible ramps, nice ample crosswalks over to this new brick vista. And the sidewalks in front of the Whaling Museum and the Juice Bar would be widened to a full 10 feet, both sides, to handle the summer volume as best we can, recognizing that we really don't have real estate in any of these corridors to handle the true summer peak. But recognizing that we do have a lot more pedestrians to handle than even 10, 15 years ago, trying to make these significantly wider and keep people out of walking in the street. The roadway through here would be narrowed to 22 feet, which is obviously ample to have trucks passing. The corners, this corner here specifically, would be flush for pedestrian crossing and to allow wide trucks to make the turn with the tail end coming across. Coming down South Beach Extension, we would maintain the back of the businesses here identically, the same sidewalk and all the parking and loading zone that's there. The only change proposed back here would be to bring, introduce a very narrow sidewalk in brick that would connect the Oak Street sidewalk to the Broad Street sidewalk. And that whole area would be flush with the pavement. So it'd be indistinguishable between, for a car driving down here, or a truck making a delivery, or a pedestrian walking. They basically can share the space. But it gives the pedestrian a place to go if a vehicle comes. And it sort of invites people down to use this connection point where, right now, it's, it's sort of an alley that gets very underutilized. Might be able to shed and move some more people off of some of the main drags to get them to move around differently. Oak Street, basically, the connection there is virtually the same. We wouldn't be touching the water side of Oak, because that's part of the discussions that are going on with Easy Street and Broad Street. So we're going to essentially cut off the pavement improvements right at the corner. And then the only thing we're considering up on the upper side of Oak is potentially bumping out the brick on this side here, in this area, essentially just sliding out the loading zone, provide a little bit more of vista of brick, and shortening up the crosswalk here. This is a two-way stretch of Oak, which most people don't know about. And then the lower portion is a one-way out to Easy Street. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Love to, I, there's a tremendous amount of information that has gone into this. Lot of different feedback from a lot of different parties. I know this is a lot to take in. If you've seen it for the first time, I know most of you aren't at the table here. But for any audience members, this is not something that was done, you know, without a lot, a great deal of thought and input from a great deal of people. So happy to hear. Any comments, questions, or really any new ideas?
Anyone have any comments or questions?
I just want a couple of things. I spent maybe four, over, I bet, four hours, three or four hours with a couple of different groups. And, you know, it's still a lot to take in. But I, you know, with the groups that we, that Rob and I participated in, Rob has always been, was very, you know, listened, made a lot of adjustments as people had some great ideas. A couple of things I learned was, I guess some people may say, well, why do this now? And certainly, the sewer line break gives us an opportunity to do something while the road is torn up. And then also, I learned that the plan for improvements to Easy Street and Broad Street are about a year away. Is that, is that true?
The plan would be to wrap that up and get that constructed next winter.
So this may have jumped, I mean, this may, this, this may not be in the queue if it hadn't been for the break. But certainly contiguous streets like Easy and Broad Street were, and it makes some sense to do it now, I think.
Does the Yacht Club have any thoughts? I'm sure they do, on losing that sidewalk?
Yeah, I think the Yacht Club have referred to all kinds of different opinions. But the Yacht Club, I will say publicly, has been extremely supportive and open to lots of different ideas here. I should say that there's still a lot to be done, even if, whatever option, or whatever consideration the board is interested in going forward with. But this is certainly not the only option, clearly. But I wanted to bring out a lot of the different concepts that have been discussed. And to see, this is a substantially different way to go. It works, in my opinion. And again, it's, it's a confluence of numerous input from folks, both good and bad. And I recognize this is not going to be consensus type of situation. And regardless of what we do, whether we take no action and leave it as is, or, or do something, there's, there's going to be parties that are not going to be happy. You know, we can't get it finished fast enough, et cetera. I get all that. But the point is that, more than anything, I felt my responsibility to bring some new, fresh ideas that people have been raising and we've been able to pull together to a cohesive plan in front of the board for consideration. It's not too often that these type of opportunities come together. And so, again, I'm ready to talk further about that.
But to the, additional points on the Yacht Club, it was based on their feedback that the, the higher curb was put in. And they had their attorney, I assume he was a member and attorney there, and he, they talked about, they'd be willing to give us a, basically a license through a license agreement, access to their property, because they own the new building that's being built across the street at the corner of Whalers. So I think they were very accommodating.
I think having, I mean, I think having more wheelchair accessibility, and I think as well strollers, because that's what I see a lot of people hopping off sidewalks in there, a lot of cars. I think the changes are, I think they're interesting. They look good. It's definitely a big change. But I think, I like that losing the sidewalk on one side to have a good sidewalk on the other. I think my only concern is that, it's not a major concern, but that it's a lot of pavement, so additional trees to make it a treed area. So it's not, 10 feet is roughly four chairs there. I'm just trying to visualize.
Oh, you mean the sidewalk?
Yeah, the 10-foot wide sidewalk.
Actually, it would be nine foot maximum.
Nine foot.
At, nine foot up around Cooks through Whalers coming south. And then it would widen out a little bit more than that.
To 10.
And what are they now?
Right now, at one, on the tennis court side by, between Cooks and Whalers is five. And the other side, the narrow point is near the hydrant on the Yacht Club side. That area, not including the hydrant impediment, is about four and a half. So roughly, if we're adding them together, you're, you're getting the nine. The, the widest point on the side that's proposed to go way down at the bottom here is about seven feet.
I think it makes sense.
I just wanted to make a comment about, Rita's comment about the trees. You have to be very careful about that, especially if you're adding trees on South Beach Street, only because we do use that as a reverse truck route, and we don't need to, can't have anything that impedes into the traveled way.
Height.
And it's also in a flood zone area, so not many trees survive in that type of environment either.
Hmm. Yeah, it's just, and, you know, I think there's always the logistics and practicality, especially with trucks. But just, when you start widening pavement, it's kind of a hot corner. It's about making it nice for pedestrians, I think, is ultimately the goal.
One, one thing that I'll add is, one idea that's come up during this whole process, from Easy to Broad to South Beach, is to, to really take a look at what can be done along this, with, in concert with the Steamship Authority, to really beautify the strip between their property and ours. And I think there is, there's definitely some movement among all these discussions to make that happen. So I'm definitely encouraged that some, something meaningful is, is coming down the road. What that's going to look like, we're not 100% yet. But there's definitely some considerations that really should help really beautify the entrance into the town, you know, off the Steamship.
Great.
I have a question. The, there's a couple poles that remain in the, in the sidewalk on that west side. How, is it, is it still three feet of passage where those poles are going to be?
There would be three feet by ADA standards.
Right.
I'm glad you brought up the poles again, because the, you know, the easy answer is, hey, just get the poles moved or put underground and et cetera. Anecdotally, during this process, someone mentioned to me that one of the well-to-do Mantucketers years ago worked hard to get, Arthur Binicky or something like that?
Walter.
Walter, thank you. Someone told me that Walter was instrumental in getting a number of poles eliminated and underground installed. And this was one area that a request went in and did not make it. There's a tremendous amount of equipment on those poles in those, in this area. There's five poles from, from Broad just to C Street. And I can understand the challenges, particularly because of the annual coastal flooding that occurs. So being sensitive to their equipment, it sounds like up in the air is the best case for it. At least, that's the, the feedback I'm getting. So I think there's no real easy solution. Maybe they could be put physically underground, you know, somewhere down the road. But as we've seen before, it's, it's far easier said than done. And I think if we started the process today, you know, we'd be years out before that came to fruition.
Yeah, but if you're getting, if you're getting handicapped, if you're getting flat sidewalks that are handicap accessible, you've made an improvement.
That's right. And I think this, this plan goes in that direction, to provide at least the, the three-foot minimum, if not more, in most of these locations.
I'd say too, that we've all, you know, I think everyone's aware how congested that roadway already is with infrastructure within the roadway. It would be on the difficult side to add more into it.
Rob, I want to come in on this whole process of doing the public information session. I went with Matt to the first one. I went with Matt to the first one. It was so nice to see all the stakeholders, from Steamship to all the business owners on the strip and Easy Street. It was great. I really liked the ADA improvements of all this. The South Beach Street extension, I never thought of. I don't know how, that's a great idea. Oak Street, all the corners and intersections are great. My only, and we've talked about this, my only question mark is taking that sidewalk away. I think we're only going to know if it works until we do it. But I come across there, my bike tours two or three times a day, so I'm very familiar with it. It's not going to hurt or help the bike tours. But I just feel that people go from the quickest from A to B, and we're going to have people walking, whether there's a sidewalk there or not. I just feel like I'm going to come across on a bike, and there's going to be cars coming both ways, and there's going to be people walking both sides. And I just, I just see an issue with taking away that sidewalk. I know why you're proposing it. I get it. That's, that's my only concern.
Sure. No, I totally agree that initially, certainly, initially, you're going to have a fair amount of people that are coming down Steamship like they always have, and they know they have to make that turn to get on the sidewalk, and suddenly it won't be there. And so now what? So change obviously is not going to happen overnight. And, and I, you know, I was a teenager once too, 80%, probably a little bit higher than that, will be expected to do the right thing and cross and use the nice inviting sidewalk, you know, with the stroller or whatever. Are we kidding ourselves, saying that no one's going to walk in the road anymore? I, I think we could, you know, you can paint the street, you can put up signs, you can do enforcement, you can do all kinds of stuff, and you're going to find people that are on their own path. So I think, I, I understand what you're saying, and I definitely agree that you're not going to get 100% participation here. But I think if we do the right thing, and if we do provide the facility that's improved and it's flush and more inviting by having more of something than less of both and split. I think the other important part that it seems obvious but should be stated, and it came up most recently with discussion with the boating community, was right now, as narrow as it is, you have two points of conflict with pedestrians and vehicles. And so by eliminating one sidewalk and putting it all on one side, you completely eliminate a point of conflict. And that's, you know, that's reduction or increase in safety by 50%. Again, that's sort of obvious, but just should be stated. And again, I, I'll be totally frank, I'm new here, and I don't know if, if the town's frankly ready for this. I don't necessarily, you know, I don't want to be the one who makes a major change here. And, you know, something goes bad, it doesn't work right. So I'm extremely cautious about this and have appreciated people's input into this. And so I'm happy to hear more about what the board wants to do.
Well, I'll try to be there tomorrow night to listen, see what people have to say. If I was hauling boat trailers all day, I would want that, I want that extra three or four feet. See you later sidewalk. But I just don't know if it's at the expense of pedestrians. I know we're widening on the other side, but I just, slow is safer. And I know everybody's got to pull their mirrors in, their trucks to get through there, but it slows everything down. It's slower, safer to me.
Sure.
Being on a bike. And so I just, I know you're being very cautious about this, so I would just suggest strongly to really look at it. I know we don't have a lot of time to look at it, to get this, you know.
When do you need, yes, on that topic, when do you need the direction from us? What's to keep this moving?
Yeah, it's here tonight for direction. I can say, be honest with you. You know, every day, it's been a 45, it's a 45-day contract to get to the end of the, the repair, I'm sorry, the pipe assessment and repair contract, which is due to end at the end of March, or near the end of March. Right now, the plan is to basically start at C Street and work their way out of town with the repairs and closing up shop. So it frees us up to step in immediately behind them. Right now, I have Victor Brandon lined up for March 5th start, which is a week from this coming Monday. So it would be great to have a plan in place, you know, as soon as possible to, to give some direction to our contractor.
Just thinking about how to change behavior, and I'm not an expert on that in this, but there are, I think there's a combination of making it, making a journey across South Beach Street attractive as people are coming from the Steamship, which, and Rob's got given examples, and also ways to create some visual barriers and actual barriers for people to know that there isn't a sidewalk down there. And I, and I'm, like several, I'm just very concerned about the current situation, which is, I think, very unsafe. You can't, you know, you can't, there's no ability for, if somebody's walking down that sidewalk, for someone to pass them who may be going at a different pace without going down into the street. And they oftentimes don't look behind them to see what's coming. And so I just, I see it as a safety improvement along the lines that Rob has discussed.
We've got a couple of people in the audience. Matt, you want to?
Hi, my name is Matt Parker. I am the seventh C Street Inn. And I just want to make a couple of comments. One is that probably 90% of all my guests that stay in my place are coming from Steamboat Wharf, and they're pedestrians, they're, they're walking with their luggage, their wheeled luggage. And I often describe that journey from Steamboat Wharf to my property on C Street as sort of walking in an airport, at least in my, in my dreams, that's what I wish it was like. Of course, it's nothing quite like that right now. It's, it's a very treacherous journey. And I guess if nothing more, I would like to impress upon the board how anxious I am for the safety of my guests, but also for everyone that's walking through this. It's like a minefield. It's really, it's pretty scary, this intersection in particular. So time is of the essence. I am hoping that some decisions can be made as soon as possible, so that by the time April and May comes along, there's going to be a safe corridor for people that are coming from that wharf, most again, who are walking. Yeah, I hear what you're saying in terms of the sidewalks. Right now, we have five-foot sidewalks on both sides, neither of which are very serviceable. Seems to make sense to me to, to have one that truly is serviceable. And if the decision is that it would be on the, on the Whaling Museum and Whalers Lane side of the road, then that sounds, that sounds fantastic to me. But anyway, I just hope that we can move forward quickly on this, and I'm excited to see that some thought's been put into it.
Thank you. I just want to make mention, if Mr. Parker wasn't here earlier, invite him to tomorrow night's meeting upstairs at 6 o'clock to further discuss sidewalks. That'd be great. Thank you.
Hello, Sean Cabral, A South Shore Road. Just have a couple of comments, not really, I mean, so much concerns, but, you know, first of all, you know, I've never seen anyone get confused walking up Broad Street, taking a right on the, you know, South Beach Street before. I mean, it's pretty obvious, you know, you have a little area there that connects to the sidewalk. You had said that you wanted to put a sidewalk on, I believe that's Beach Street behind the Crown and Sunken Ship, because people walk down that road without a sidewalk, because people on Nantucket just walk in the street without sidewalks. So I don't really think that's really going to necessarily stop the people walking in front of the yacht club, especially some of the yacht club crowd. I don't, I don't really see that happening. Also, I agree with Jason about biking and safety. A wider road, people are going to go faster. That's just how it is out here. It's a lot safer on a bike and the, on the narrower roads actually, because a lot of the cars are nervous, and they're going to go slower. So I mean, I've never really seen a lot of accidents happen down there. Maybe they are, and I'm just not noticing them. I mean, you have Belgium Block there in town where the rest of Nantucket is cobble. You know, I, my biggest concern is really, I just want to, I don't want to see any sort of generic look, which, and I'm, I'm not saying that this is necessarily generic, but I think we're going through like a transition stage on Nantucket here, where it's historic Nantucket, and it's now transitioning into something else. And I just, I'd just rather go a little slower. You know, we're already changing the face down there, we're having that little pocket park down there that's going to change the area a little bit. And to do everything all at once, I'm just nervous that it's just going to make the island a little too generic when we're, you know, little historic Nantucket. And so I just want you to take that into consideration as well. I have two kids out here, four and six years old, plenty of times out here on a stroller. No sidewalk in town is convenient. No sidewalk in town is convenient. Main Street is inconvenient with all the traffic. I mean, it's just, no sidewalk in town is convenient. All the sidewalks are bumpy. That's part of the charm, I guess, you know, but I just want you to take that into consideration, that it is a fine line, and I do appreciate all the work. You know, I think that, like, a lot of the improvements are great in town, really appreciate it. I just would rather, I, you know, maybe it is just a little too much too soon, or how you said, or just, I just want you to consider that as well, just take a little, you know, take that into consideration.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Tucker?
Hi, here in a little bit different capacity. My family's had a business for 40 years, right there between Whalers Lane and Broad Street. And I just want to applaud all the work that's been going into fixing things in that area and all the thought that's gone into this particular plan. I really just had a clarifying question. With the expanded sidewalk proposal idea on the Whaling Museum side of the street, would it be more or less at the same height relative to the street that it is today?
Yes, more or less. We're going to take a look at it, and there's, as with most projects, we, we do find out to some surprises out in the field, but we're going to go into it as, as, there was room in any plan for field modifications. So as we talked about possibly, you know, raising the intersection slightly to sort of match the sidewalk, to have flush crossing.
Yep.
As we go down, the primary thought is to make sure that thresholds are met and we have, we don't make any situations worse, and we try to improve as we go down, you know, down the whole sidewalk, trying to stay in conformance with ADA standards. I'm not sure if I answered your question, but do you have specific concerns about the property that has challenges currently?
No, I mean, I appreciate what you had said before. It's, there may be no simple, easy solution here. I just was, when I see high curb on the yacht club side of the plan, I'm wondering if the intention is that is meant to be, I think of a high curb existing on the other side of the street already, and whether it's to try to more or less mirror the current relationship.
Now, this high curb is something that is specifically looking to protect the building.
Yep.
So this is, we're talking about a 12-inch vertical granite.
Okay.
That would protect the building from wheel, or trucks from being able to actually come in contact with the building. The, the design is about two and a half feet off the two tight corners.
Yep.
Of the building here. So the request was to, to run about 190 feet of high curb there to make sure that you didn't have any strays strike the building.
So that's only on the one side, not on yours?
No, I understand.
The other side would be, you know, maximum standard six inch, unless there was some situation that existed that required us to go higher than that based on, you know, an existing threshold into the building, something like that.
Right.
We would hold that and then run, run the cross sidewalk.
Maybe I can say it this way, and tell me if I'm wrong, it, more or less, the intent would be to keep it essentially at the level at which it is today, perhaps needing to modify for ADA requirements or that sort of thing.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Couple more comments? Yeah. All right.
Yes, James Cabral, A South Shore Road. I have a couple of comments. In front of Walter's, I think that's a huge mistake to even encourage anybody, kids, to stand out in front and order something. You're just going to get kids congregating. If it's okay, it's okay. There already is a sidewalk behind the Sunken Ship and the Rosen Crown. I know if my friend's truck is there and I'm in there, if there's a sidewalk, I don't know if I'd be able to get down it. And that's, and the Belgium Block, if you watch the rotaries, one by the Stop and Shop, people don't drive on it, they don't think they can. They stay on the tar. So if people stay on the tar here, you're going to create that bottleneck that you're just trying to open up with the corners. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My interest in this is, for those who know me, I walk downtown literally every night for more years than I ever want to talk about. I've been involved in a lot of things. Rob took the time to meet with me a while back. I think there are really two options. The option Rob's putting on the table with some details worked out, and there was this idea early on a few years ago about working with the yacht club to see if you could get two feet, instead of go for 22 feet, go for 20 feet there, which is a middle ground. I do think you should make sure that's an option that's talked about publicly, so people make a conscious choice. I would also just throw out one other comment. I think he's done a great job of public outreach, but there's still a lot of people who don't know. I would challenge you, I'm not saying it has to be a public meeting, but I would challenge you to have the planning board here and get an opinion from them, town planning groups, and I would challenge you to put an ad in the paper, say, this is, this is important to the kind of general view of all these complicated issues, so that you can solid ground in the summer, say, we vetted it very well, when you pick whichever of the directions you pick. You know, the fact is, that needs to get better. There are hundreds of people every hour that use it with luggage, with their kids, they're going to jetties, they're going to children's, they're going to, going to the inns, they're going out to dinner. And, you know, we need to get it right. And, you know, and Rob isn't a rush, and I get why, but somehow over the next two or three weeks, we need to make sure we vet all those options, because it's a real leap, whichever direction we go in, and we just, at the same time, we need to get this man a timely answer.
Thank you.
Is it, at the yacht club, is it 20 feet or 22 feet?
Existing or proposed?
Proposed.
Proposed would be 20 feet all the way from Broad Street to Cooks Bicycle.
Yeah, that's what I, so it's 20 feet, not 22 feet.
So.
In terms of the alternative, the other option was?
At the beginning of the street, from right about the Steamship parking lot.
Yep.
Down to Whalers Lane, it's, it's basically 18 feet narrowing out to about 19, correct?
It's 18 all the way to Whalers.
Yeah, so in that area, if you could work with the yacht club, if they could work with you, and you picked up two feet, you could make the street wider and keep the two sidewalks on both sides of the street, was something that was talked about several times, five years ago, again, two years ago. And, and I wouldn't speak for the yacht club, but I would say they at least sat and listened. No one had a revolting.
But it is 20 feet. What am I missing here?
Well, we would widen from 18 to 20.
Right.
Right, so that's an optional plan, separate from what's here. That's all I was saying. That keeps sidewalks on both sides of the street is what it does for you.
So instead, I think what you're saying, instead of getting a nine-foot sidewalk, you'd get a six and a three.
No, you would get the same sidewalks you have today, but you would bump them into some of the, if, again, the yacht club was willing, you would bump two feet into the yacht club property, gaining the same two feet that you're trying to gain, but Rob's after 22, which I understand why, and I'm not saying wrong.
He's after 20.
No, he's after 20.
He's after 20. There's only 20 at the end of the day.
So.
We started with 22.
Yeah.
And we've come back to 20.
Okay. Last time we talked, it was 22. So all's I was saying was, there's an, there's an optional plan that you would want to show the public and then say, but this is why we prefer this plan, what do you think? That's my suggestion, is people come back this summer, I think everybody's right, over time, people will get used to this. People come off that boat, and again, I walk that at night, at nine o'clock at night with carriages of luggage, and you cannot get on either one of those sidewalks. And that's a lot for people to just absorb, and we want to get it right. And that's truly my only interest. I think he's put a lot of great ideas out there, and I think it's just about how, over the next two or three weeks, we make sure we vet them all well and pick the right direction.
All right, great, thank you. So, so, give me the wits again. So the sidewalk on the, this side will be our wide? Just sort of run me from.
Yep.
From Whalers down, up there on.
To give you a reference, it's basically nine feet. This, this stretch is nine feet.
Okay.
And that includes this little sliver of widening here. So as you cross, you'd be at nine feet here. And then this little, this front sliver is that nine feet slowly widening and then getting into this curve out here. So generally out here at the, the backside of the Whaling Museum, you'd be looking at about a 12-foot. So essentially, you go from this big wide vista to 12 feet and then it starts to taper down to nine feet here. And then you cross and then stay on nine feet up to Cook's and then cross. So you don't have to cross at Cook's, you could stay on at Cook's. You still have a fairly wide sidewalk through their driveway and in front of their building. And then you can carry across C. The idea would be that you could split, you know, essentially the pedestrian traffic has the ability to split at Cook's. And if you want to cross to start at Sarah Campbell's and go north, you know, we expect a fair amount of traffic to head that direction. Give them the opportunity and then at that point, you don't necessarily need nine feet on one side or the other because you hypothetically have divided or, you know, cut down on the, the volume at that point forward.
Because then you've got five or six on each side.
That's right.
Yeah. Could, do you have a plan that has, you know, five and three or six and three here? Is that?
I haven't sketched one up yet.
Not for that, okay.
So we've talked a lot about going from the steamship down South Beach, but there's a lot of traffic coming the, the other direction. And the concept there is to have that, you can't use your fancy words, but the, the big crosswalk, which is an attraction, and then the hydrant at the end of that, at those buildings, that is a deterrent because there's no sidewalk there. Is that fair statement?
So there had been some talk about relocating the hydrant that's along, about halfway down, you know, actually near the driveway of the yacht club. Relocating the hydrant up near the utility pole that's located right here inside the, in this area to sort of start to create a physical barrier to prevent people from walking straight through here, coming through the private property and then out into the street. So we've gone back and while we don't have the details of what that would look like, it would likely be some sort of vegetated barrier that would come towards the street. And the hydrant is being relocated to the back of the sidewalk that exists out there today to, to get out of the way with whatever we're gonna do. Either keep the sidewalk or widen the road over to that side.
Let me just ask just the board one question. Are we happy with everything except for whether there's one sidewalk or two? Do we, is everyone happy with all the other changes that are proposed?
I'm happy with one sidewalk.
I understand, but I'm trying to clear, I think I've heard one person, it may not be.
But they're so integral, so I don't, I don't, but anyway. That seems to be the only point of conversation.
That's what I'm saying, so it seems like, so I guess consensus is all the rest of it, the bump outs and the, you know, the rest, I think we are pretty happy with, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But we may have consensus on the one sidewalk too, if we, if we pose that question to the board.
Well, that's, I'm getting there.
Good.
I'm working my way there. My concern, my concern on this is any change, like, some of this is historic fabric and it's how we, how we, people are viewed. And it'll, and what will happen, I'm afraid, is if we make a huge change, you know, the people that haven't shown up in the meetings, we could, you know, we could have everyone from the planning board come next week and put it in the paper and a few more people know, I think we'll hear it, you know, start of the summer when everyone looks and drives down there and says, what's going on here? You know, so I think, and, and I would hate to have that impact, the ability to do more of these changes because I think, you know, 90% of this, 95% of this is great and needs to be done. I think shortening the walkways, delineating where people can walk, you know, and where people are supposed to drive, I think that's all stuff that's long overdue. And so now the question really is, I think, do we, you know, have one sidewalk or, you know, or how do we vet it to know if we can do one, you know? So anyway, that's, I think that's the point of contention right now. Do we do it on one side or both sides?
And we don't really have two to three weeks to make that decision? Is that what Rob is saying?
Probably not.
With the timeframe of the work.
That's okay.
One, a couple of things I just wanted to add. There's, there's a big part of this that is Steamship involved. Steamship has been represented at the sidewalk meeting that we held in January. And we've also had a number of other discussions with Steamship representatives. So they are, they're gonna be attending tomorrow night's session as well to have further discussions. But it, it's important here to recognize that while Steamship operations occur here, there's also some property considerations. A large part of this sidewalk down Broad Street and actually part of this intersection, as well as the parking area for the trucks, is owned by Steamship. So regardless of what we do, they are definitely a major player when it comes to this side of the intersection. Whether they are supportive of ending pedestrians at the end of their truck operations or being supportive of trying to sneak in a connection sidewalk along their exit to connect to a shortened sidewalk remains to be seen. I just wanted to throw that out there because it's, again, as much as, as partners along this whole stretch, particularly the yacht club on both sides of the road, the Steamship is, is another player that needs to be considered here.
And have you, you were gonna meet with them or did?
I have met with them extensively and we, they, their board doesn't meet again until March 20th, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Which is significantly down, that, you know, way, way down the road.
But did management give you any?
We're gonna meet, meet directly with management tomorrow.
I mean, really today's point, I think, is always, he reads this community very well and, you know, there would be an opportunity for us to have kind of a public airing of this. We don't have a meeting scheduled next week, but that doesn't mean we can't. We could come and just devote all of our time to this, ask people to come, planning board, et cetera. And I'd be happy to support that if that was something the board was interested in doing.
I would say, just to be open with everybody, I'm actually not here next week. But that said, it may be a good thing to have open discussion without me here. I, I would say between now and when I leave, I'm happy to work up another scenario plan here that would try to recognize what it might look like with sidewalks on both sides.
If that's possible, that'd be great, because then you could look at it and say, okay, this no sidewalk is a better option.
Sure. Again, there is some things here in that discussion that are outside of my control and frankly, outside the board's control.
Right.
Which is private property and Steamship property. But again, we've, we've had extensive discussions with a lot of people along the quarter.
And I think in the discussions, it's been, I think most people have been very supportive and willing to give easements and willing to let encroachments go onto their, you know, onto their properties. I mean, it was amazing, some of the stuff that came out of the first meeting we went to, people are saying, oh, I talked to these two guys and they're willing to have it go here and, you know, it's amazing. So I think hopefully the Steamship will be, you know, in a similar vein. I mean, I think you're trying to solve some of their issues as well.
Sure.
And will you be presenting this tomorrow evening for discussion?
Yes, we'll be, yes.
Yeah.
Dave?
Really, Rob brought up a point I think is really valid. You know, there's at least two utility poles that absolutely take a great improvement and marginalize it. You, you are not gonna get National Grid to do an engineering estimate and provide you information in any time that helps this project. The way those work is you, you pay them, it'd be a fee, it's about $50,000. I looked at it once a few years ago, just so we could get a sense. And they'll provide you a plan on how to do it. It can be put underground. It's probably a $500,000 expense to eliminate the three poles, order a magnitude estimate. It's not 4 million, it's not $100,000. But it's probably a two and a half, three-year process. But just so as you're talking about it and people bring it up, you ask them to do the engineering, they provide you back an estimate, they then approach Comcast and Verizon, they do the same. And about two years from now, you have a plan and then you cover the costs. And it would be in that range, just kind of a point of information.
Great, thank you.
Do you need more direction from us, more specific direction? Rob?
We asked for a decision tonight.
Well, again, realistically, we're gonna be, we're gonna be putting a shovel in the ground on the 5th. Before that would be really, I think, necessary. So next week, maybe in time for me to return on the 5th and get, get started would be great. I mean, the, the reality is, these things take time. This is not something that is gonna be rushed through, even if we're working extended hours and outside of, you know, the, what we normally do. The reality is that we're asking a lot of the contractor to be able to get this online. And, you know, while everyone has been just amazingly cooperative and patient through the break and the aftermath that has followed, we are not kidding ourselves, like, literally every day that this remains closed from here out, every one of us is gonna get pressure. And the pressure only exponentially climbs every week that this remains closed. So recognizing that, I mean, there is urgency, I'm not saying that there's urgency to have a decision made. I'm just saying, I think we all recognize that there is a major urgency here and that, you know, whatever decision is made by the board, you know, we're willing to carry out. We just, we'd like that sooner, as soon as we can.
Libby?
First off, I'm not sure it'd be a great idea to have a public hearing or meeting next week because it is vacation week and I think a lot of people won't be here. Secondly, I know that a lot of thought and effort has gone into this and, but it hasn't been for months and months at a time. So just, we need, we probably need to do a little internal review of whether or not our emergency procurement waiver extends to expanding the sidewalk like this. I'm hearing from finance that it probably does not, which may mean we would have to bid that part of the project out anyway. So that's something we're gonna need to talk about. So that's just for the board to understand, but I agree with Rob. This is something that we need to act on one way or another as quickly as possible because we are getting routine inquiries almost daily now about when South Beach will be open.
I can't support it with one sidewalk.
Okay.
Just throwing that out there, on how we want to make a motion.
Can or cannot?
Cannot.
Cannot.
I want, I would like to see two sidewalks.
Or at least see the option and.
Or the other option, yeah.
Okay.
I would lean towards the one sidewalk, but I, I feel it's, I feel a little underprepared to make the decision tonight, absolutely, without a little more discussion and understanding some of the safety implications.
Well, doesn't, from what I just heard from Libby, we're not even assured that it's possible to make a decision. So unless, until we get that, you know, signal from town administration.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if that's what I said, I was just saying that.
In terms of the, of the funding being able to.
Well, it wasn't so much the funding as the procurement requirements.
Okay.
We don't have the funding for any of this. So we're, that's a different matter. And we are trying to seek some emergency FEMA money, we don't know if we're gonna get that or not. At the very least, we're gonna be seeking state revolving loan funds, et cetera. But the issue was, this could take a little bit longer anyway because if we are going to do this sort of new sidewalk construction, then it, in all likelihood, does not fall under our emergency procurement waiver, which simply means adding a few weeks probably to the timeline, but not, not the funding.
Well, that's important information too.
Yeah.
So I didn't, that's new information, but I don't think the board has.
If we had to do the procurement, how quickly could we get that out? Could we put it to bid for so many, because you know it's gonna be the same amount of square feet of sidewalk either, either way, more or less. So could we, could we get that out sooner? I mean, that's a.
Well, we, I mean, if tonight you said, we want to do the one sidewalk option, then we would prepare the bid specs quickly to get it out as soon as possible. But if you, if you, and I completely understand this, if you say we want additional public input, then the, the procurement timeline is probably six weeks, four to six weeks.
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking at is, is, is could you put the bid out now, saying we want so many square feet of brick?
No, you have to put out a design.
A design too, okay, see.
I have to make a, but what I, we were asked to make a decision, but we didn't have the information that we, it'll add six weeks, was why I hear it's gonna add six weeks because of procurement.
Potentially.
Is that?
Probably.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Is that a fair, is that a fair statement?
I would need to look at the dates of what the.
Brian?
Advertising requirements are.
I mean, I think the, the issue with procurement could be probably resolved with the fact that we have a contract with Victor Brandon. One of, what the problem really is, is that we asked DOR for approval to spend in excess of appropriations for two, for emergency reasons. And that emergency only allows us to bring it back to what it was before the emergency. That, that's where the question that we would have to resolve with DOR is, any of these other changes may not be considered bringing it back to where it was. It's an expansion of that and that's what the question that we had, we would have to answer or discuss with DOR is, would that be appropriate with the declaration? So, I mean, we do have a contract with Victor Brandon that we could probably fit a lot of the work under already based under the annual paving contract. That, that's where the question really resolves from the finance perspective.
So if that can be resolved, then we would be able to move forward much quicker.
And my concern is if we miss, if we don't make a decision tonight and then we're two weeks out and then we're six weeks from then, I get worried that we're gonna start running into the summer.
You should have known, I, I think.
I understand, so.
I would like to have known that, so I probably wouldn't have been so. Because I, you know.
I just think it really needs to be looked at and it's a little fast. I don't want to be the obstructionist and say, we, we need more time. But I actually, I just, I don't feel comfortable doing one sidewalk.
You're in my seat tonight.
Yeah, right?
It was obstruction seat. I, yeah, I'm, I'm sort of with you, I'd like to see the other, I'd like to see both designs and I worry about how it'll impact future projects, so. And we're not gonna meet next week, so the next time we could, I guess, so could we get the information and make the decision 100% two weeks from now? That would be the ideal goal then, I guess.
I think getting public input is still gonna be difficult.
I'm not comfortable with, you know, delaying this project, opening up South Beach Street eight weeks, which is what I hear would be, based on the procurement.
Which we don't know right now, for sure.
We've heard, we, we.
Well, we don't know if there's a possibility to get around it, correct? If, it depends on how the DOR determines whether or not it's.
Well, I don't think, I guess it's not, really not ready for a decision tonight.
It's not, yeah.
If Mike, if Mike Burns was, was standing here saying, this is the best solution, you're gonna get hurt a little bit by only having one sidewalk, but this is the best thing to do and here's why. He has specialized knowledge, he's a transportation supervisor, right? We're trying to make a decision on kind of what we're seeing in this packet. And we don't have him here for that. So that's another reason why, hearing from, you know, the people who have knowledge and planning about this. I just, I want to do it right. So I, I can make a motion to approve everything except this one section? Does that, that, does that make any, make any sense?
Yeah. It's all, it's an integrated project, so.
But, but I mean, there's a lot of other areas, everything else can, Easy Street can continue and, but South Beach Street, which you need to know now.
But as a.
But that's the baby.
That's not part of this, that's not part of this project.
Right.
Easy Street and Broad Street's not part of this project. It's just, it's just South Beach Street, just South Beach.
I'm happy to provide a second option to see what we can do to, to try to keep the sidewalks on both sides. Again, there's, there's more discussions to have with outside players.
Okay, well, I guess.
It's to put it back the way it is. That's, that's.
Or to put it back.
Well, there's, yeah, that's the, I mean, the other option is to go back exactly the way it is. That's a, that's another discussion, so.
But I think, I, my sense is, is if you could put it back as improved as much as, if we had, if we go two sides or one side, we should be, you know, widening the road as much as possible and making the sidewalk. or one side, we should be, you know, widening the road as much as possible and making the sidewalks as nice as possible if we could. So I, I don't think going back to where it is now would be the best solution.
Well, I, I would be concerned about widening the road and keeping that skinny sidewalk along the, along the, so I, I would be more in favor of going back to where, where it is now than doing that because as, as we've, we've heard, the cars and trucks are going to go a lot faster and it's already, I think, an unsafe sidewalk, people walking in the street, so. I'd prefer to keep, put it back the way it is than, than go to one sidewalk, than go to two sidewalks.
Well, and I think that the idea as well, in theory for me is if it's already being ripped up and it needs to be repaired, there's got to be cost savings to fixing it now than to tearing it up again in however many months. But it doesn't sound like we're ready to, I don't know that how much, we don't know how much cost savings there would be in that and it doesn't sound like we're ready to really be there. So, but I hate to have to put it back the way it is, only to tear it up again once we make up our mind, but it doesn't really sound like we're at a point, maybe we will be March 7th. I don't know if that makes it any better and depending on the procurement process, if we can make a decision by then, but.
If there's time to get another, the other option and still widen the road with the two feet, two Wednesdays from now, I'd like to see that. If not, then I'll, I'll just deny it all and just keep it as it is. And I don't, so, does that help? Or does that confuse it?
Will we have the, I guess, will we have the procurement stuff understood by two Wednesdays?
Yeah, well, I'm sure we'll have the procurement stuff understood by tomorrow.
Okay.
This, I mean, this is a dynamic situation. These options came up, you know, on Friday is when I started hearing about it and I heard more about it yesterday. We have a lot of things going on here.
Okay. So I guess, I don't think there's a motion at this point, I think.
What would he, what is it that you'd want to see to, specifically to add? Not sure, Jason, what you, what your option was, could you?
If there's an option to widen the road two feet and to keep two sidewalks, I'd like to see that.
Okay.
If that's not an option, then I'd deny this.
Okay, so I don't, I don't know, in order to move this along, I don't know if you would want to do this or not, but that option is, sounds like it's going to require the approval to use private property. And so we could leave it at that. And if that approval is somehow able to be secured, then we proceed with that option. If that is not able to be secured, then if I'm sort of hearing that we, well, I don't know if I'm hearing or not, leave it as is.
Well, that, you, that, that may be a good idea, is to make a motion that says, we look at this, if we can do it, we'll do, do what you suggest and if not, we, you know, we do one side. Or we do nothing.
Yeah, I, I'd like the board be able to look at the option of one sidewalk or two sidewalks and have a design for that. Rather than throwing out the two, the one sidewalk at this point. It's up to, I don't know what the vote would be to do that.
I'd like some feedback from Mike Burns. I feel like he would be someone who would, would have some knowledge. I like the idea of the one sidewalk, but I, there's the safety implications, I just don't know. And I don't know if Mike Burns would have that.
Won't trying to get easements and/or license agreements take time too?
That will, but.
Added time?
That can be added to.
I mean.
Yeah, different time track.
They'd have to all be worked.
I would just let the board know, from a constructability standpoint, the reality is, we're talking, you know, with a, with a start of March, realistically, straight out, the contractor would be hopefully getting this whole facility to us by the end of the weekend, best case. That's, that's with, you know, no interruptions for weather, no delays for materials and, you know, probably work in six days a week.
So that means May 20.
Highly disruptive. And so the point is, the more we push off a decision or are really starting anything, year into May.
So is there, is there a motion that we'd like to make saying we approve it as two sides, getting that? You know, getting the, getting the easements from the individuals, if possible?
I can't support that. I think, as I said, I'd like to see both options. So I'd make a motion that we ask whoever to come back with two designs, the current design and compare it and with also one with two sidewalks. We ask Mike Burns to review them both prior, make a recommendation and be present for our conversation. Plus, plus figure out the issues with, with procurement.
So understanding the timelines.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
Okay. All right, we have update regarding Stop the Straw.
Fun and easy after that one. So this has been months in the making. It's become a collaborative effort between Town of Nantucket, Remain and Mariah Mitchell. And this Friday is our official launch. And we pushed that ahead a little bit because Friday is officially the National Skip the Straw Day. So we will be sending out emails to restaurants and vendors in the town, essentially requesting two things. One, that they only give out straws when requested. And two, that they replace straws, plastic straws with paper straws. And we've actually, the goal of this is to really reduce plastic pollution in the ocean. So it's really tied into water quality, ocean pollution. And for a little while, we were looking at the eco-plastics, compostables and straws as being an alternative. But the more we found out about the eco-plastics is that it's specifically to the ocean pollution. Once they, if they don't get the UV they need to break down, they behave almost the same way as a plastic straw. So, and we've also discussed how they look very similar to regular straws. So it's more difficult for them to get into the right place, which is industrial composter. So you can see the pledge there and yet it's just really looking at sort of taking one more step along with plastic bags and the takeaway compostables moving towards reducing plastic pollution on Nantucket as well as reducing the waste stream. And so far, we already have a couple of places signed up for it. So it's, for the most part, it's had a good response. There have been some businesses that have concerns. We do think coffee shops and iced coffees will probably be the most difficult change for people because we've only ever known iced coffees with straws. But once we get buy-in from restaurants and vendors, we're going to be then working on individuals and asking and really working on public education so that people aren't asking for straws and they're bringing their own whenever possible.
People really want straws.
They really want straws.
You brought this, we've had this conversation for a while. And so last year I tried three different paper straws in our coffee shop in the summer. And I put, at different times, the, the plastic and the paper. And people would pick the paper. They didn't like them, even though that it breaks down really quick and it's, it's not as good. And maybe it was 20% in our little study. So people do like it. But it just, the paper straws break down in iced drinks really fast. And these kids kind of, it just breaks apart. That's, that's the problem.
It is, and there are, we were also handing out with, to the restaurants and vendors a list of recommended suppliers because we have been putting some through their paces and there are some brands that are better than others. Dawn actually sent me a photo this morning. She's in Hawaii with a paper straw in her cup. And she said it is falling apart, but it's worth it because it's not plastic. So I think it's something we'll all get used to eventually. But we also really want to acknowledge that it's not just asking restaurants and vendors that with the help of Mariah Mitchell, Remain, Garden Club, the sailing, our community sailing and all sorts of other organizations that, that are on board to make sure that we educate the public not to ask for a straw, not to expect a straw in their drink.
Have you found any success in many other communities who tried to, to charge for straws? Because you're, you're trying to, no straw is the best straw. It's kind of what you're trying to do. And people will pay a quarter if they want a straw.
Yeah. That was something that came up. I haven't found anywhere that does charge. I know I've lived places where they charge for a plastic or any kind of bag, not a plastic bag, but any kind of bag. And that 20 cent to 25 cent is approximately where people really start to change their behavior. So I think that what we're looking at is this year really trying to go in, I suppose, somewhat softly. There's huge international support for this at the moment. This definitely isn't just Nantucket. If we wait till next year, we're behind the, behind the times. So I think the message is going to be heard elsewhere, which will help with that. And if we have to go in subsequent years with something, something more along the lines of charging or going as far as a ban, which I hope we don't, I hope we get the buy-in, we'll see how it goes in the first year. But I, again, I think with the international attention that straws are getting, I, I think it's possible that going in fairly softly and nicely and making it fun and helping people feel like they can actually make small changes that make a difference. I'm hoping that we don't have to charge for it. But I understand from a business point of view and I think that it would be interesting if there are businesses that want to try that to see what the response is.
I ran into, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
What, what action are you asking us to take tonight?
No action. This was just, and unless you would like to pledge to not say no to the straw tonight, which.
I'll pledge to say no to the straw.
Perfect.
I'm going to work really hard at it.
Thank you, appreciated.
I ran into somebody at Stop and Shop who owns a high-end restaurant downtown and they, last year, pulled all their plastic cocktail straws. And I said, well, how did it go? And they said, people didn't like it or they just didn't use one. I said, did you lose any business? Did your liquor sales go down? He said, not at all.
Yeah.
So people kind of complain and they go on their way.
Yeah.
So.
Whenever I get served, not to believe, whenever I get served something at a restaurant or a bar that has a straw in it, I, I take it out. I mean, I don't.
Most people do.
I'm like, why? Why do we have that?
And the worst really are those cocktail stirs. So if we can eliminate totally the cocktail stirs, and lifeguards have mentioned, there's two things they pick up on the beach in the mornings, red solo cups and black cocktail, plastic cocktail stirs. So, you know, they are something that are adding. Yeah, exactly. They make compostable ones apparently. So, you know, I think people are going to get used to it and again, we are going to be fortunate to have the support of other communities as well. Our logo and the materials that we're putting together, Florenzy has been working really hard putting together materials. Mariah Mitchell's has a grant that this is going to be used then as a resource for the rest of the Cape and Islands. So that other one, other towns on the Cape would like to have, to do a Stop the Straw campaign, they can plug in their names into our materials. So hoping again that this has impact beyond just Nantucket.
My sense is that we, we stopped the straw in the 90s when we said that you could not use plastic unless you had a waiver. And there were, there were paper straws available then. So I made the switch at my business, you know, 20 years ago. My only concern here is that, you know, if, if we're doing it, if Jason does it in his business and it hurts him and other people do, we shouldn't be selling them at the Stop and Shops. You know, so, so everyone should be doing the same thing. There shouldn't be, you know. And, and, and right now, unless you have a waiver, you're not supposed to be using them. So, I mean, it's kind of interesting.
And I think so, so much of this has to do with timing. You know, you do things too early and people ignore it. But we have gotten, we've spoken to one of the managers at Stop and Shop and he's already looking for supplies and there are plastic straws all over Stop and Shop. So again, we're really trying to make sure that there's, we have a restaurant pledge, we have a vendor's pledge. So the vendors are Annie's, Bartlett's, Stop and Shop, anywhere that would sell straws. We need everyone to participate.
Right, and, and the, the reality is if, if some, if the big guys don't do it, then everyone else does it and, and they bring them in by the truckload anyway.
Yeah.
So really, I mean, that's the.
Yeah.
Stop them at the border.
Well, I, I, I know what you mean and I, again, I think, I think we're swimming with the stream for the most part. And I think give it a year or two. And we are also asking for anyone who has information on how many straws they purchased last year because we know there is an economic, a financial impact as well for businesses. The paper straws are more expensive. But that's also one of the reasons we're really, our first request is that you reduce by only giving them out when asked.
Actually, the numbers that you sent me, so I sent her all, you know, 30,000 iced drinks, that I always have a straw. And I'd sent Rita calculations of it and you came back within bulk, it was the same price and I'm paying for plastic.
The wholesale prices, yep. And there are things, you know, we're going to be asking for feedback. The straws, you have to buy a certain case number and you have to. We're trying to figure out how to make it as convenient as possible for all sizes of businesses to be able to buy at wholesale prices, at bulk prices. So there are definitely elements that we're going to have to work on. But with what's going on again, nationally, internationally, and also trying to get ahead of when restaurants are ordering, we said, we'll do it, we'll get it out there and then we'll try and work with everyone to make it convenient.
Well, it sounds like Stop and Shop might be an important, you know.
Ally.
Partner.
Yeah.
Kind of, I'm thinking like a tipping point.
I think, yeah.
And what, would it be inappropriate for us to go on record tonight requesting them to eliminate plastic straws from their inventory?
I think, I, I mean, I would be comfortable, I'm letting them know, they haven't been antagonistic in any. As soon as we told them, they said, we'll, you know, be looking for other sources. But I think it would help, I think there are a couple others. I don't feel comfortable singling out just Stop and Shop because I think there are a couple others that are actually huge, huge contributors to plastic straws. But I think just getting the word out there and making it known that it's important to us is a good first step. And then if we need to go and point fingers, might do that. But getting the vendors.
Nice to see their logo at the bottom of this document.
It would, wouldn't it? All right, I'll go out tomorrow and try and get it before Friday.
Just think of that, just think of that, you know? I mean, they, they take that they're such a community partner and do so much for the community. I, I think it's worth, they're worth the ask.
I'll ask, I'll ask tomorrow.
Well, they did get rid of Styrofoam coolers at one point. They used to bring those in by the truckload.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, they've, they've made efforts. All right, is there anyone, all right, we're on selectmen's report and comments? Any committee reports?
We had an Affordable Housing Trust Fund meeting yesterday, which was the first since FinCom's comments. So there was a lot of discussion and it wasn't easy discussion. And it took quite a while to peel back the layers to get to a point of taking FinCom's comments at face value and trying to understand exactly what they were looking for. And I think that there was a sense of, there are a couple of things. One is, some of the information that was being asked for, we have, it's just not in a very presentable, easy to communicate, palatable format. And so I think that's unfortunate in many ways that we would get to this, as far as we got down the road with this funding situation, simply because it wasn't done. To me, that's really a failure of process to not been able to get that information in a timely manner because the information was there. But after quite a bit of discussion and back and forth about what would the next best step to be, we are going to be looking to have a session with Judy Barrett, who has written the housing production plan and look at it specifically for us. Because one of the things we think is being missed is that the housing production plan is a town plan and should be utilized by all boards to recognize their roles in affordable housing. So like any of the other boards that are playing a part, now the Affordable Housing Trust Fund does need to look at it, look at the recommendations and come up with our own plan specific to the trust fund that is creation-oriented, transparent. And with that comes an administrative plan that has very clear guidelines and criteria written out that show how, why we're making the decisions that we're making specifically to any of the funding decisions as well as in keeping with a bigger plan for creation. So we anticipate that this will be an initial meeting to jumpstart the conversation and after that, there'll be subsequent opportunities to develop a, a long-term plan.
That's good.
I just have one comment on that and that's, I have a lot of respect for Judy Barrett and, and you know, there's a fundamental challenge you have, which is, you, you make wonderful policies, but you don't, and, but they're being implemented by volunteers. You don't have, you don't have staff. And I'm wondering if that would be a question you might want to pose to Judy about is, what, you know, what are the staffing needs for that, for the function that you're trying to carry out?
And I think that's something, and I, I recommend everyone read sections one and three particularly of the housing production plan before our next workshop. But that is, one of the first paragraphs says, Affordable Housing Trust Fund will most likely, not even most likely, needs additional staff support. And I think it's very clear, particularly for an organization that meets once a month, we absolutely need more staff support than what we have available. And I, I do think that, that will be one of the items that I think is going to get pulled out of the production plan and identified as something that we have to look at. It has to be baked into the way we work, not a, get to a crisis point before we think about getting more help. So that will be a focus.
Right, anyone else?
Just have a comment, just following up on the discussion last night, last week about how to improve maybe the efficiency of our meetings. And we, I mentioned a couple of things. One idea was to have the town manager review with us issues that are coming. One idea was to have the town manager review with us issues that are coming up in the next, over the next month or two of meetings. And I don't know if anybody, if you gave any more thought to that, but I know that would be helpful, and to know if you wanted to, if you agreed, we could make that request to the town manager.
I, I think it makes sense, Jim. I mean, I've asked Libby before, sometimes I, I don't know what's happening until I get the packet on Friday. And then, you know, I'm scurrying around. And I think, Libby, you said to me once, in the past, I've, I've put things, hey, this is coming up the next two, three, four weeks, send an email out, and you never got really a response. So you haven't really gotten the, you know, an interest from the board. But I think this board is interested, I would appreciate it.
And I would appreciate having it at our meeting. Have it just brought up, you know, as part of the town manager's report, saying just heads up. And then we, that gives us the opportunity to say, "Oh, well then, you know, maybe I'd like to have this." And somebody said, "Yeah, that makes sense." I mean, that's, I think that kind of dialogue would be helpful personally.
I'm not so sure, but, and, and I just, I'm not so sure, because I'm not sure sometimes we know what we, we even need. Which kind of leads to, it leads me to kind of, I've been, I, I sort of ranted a couple weeks ago, but I was reading a book yesterday. There was a University of Michigan business professor, Carl Wyke, and learning and solutions, there are three stages of learning and solutions. The first stage is superficial simplicity, where you kind of think you know it and it's kind of easy. The second stage, stage is confused complexity, where you're confused, it's a lot, you all of a sudden realize, geez, these sewers, there's a lot to know about this. And then the final step is profound simplicity. So by that, once you really know something really well, and you know it inside and out, then it's easy to explain it. And I think a lot of times, we get stuck on step one or two, you know, as individuals, and, and, and the more convoluted and difficult something is, we're still kind of stuck in maybe, I feel, I feel get stuck on confused complexity most of the time on these issues. And so I think somehow, you know, figuring out how do we get to the, the understanding is part of what we're trying to do, part of the, you know, the planning that we're doing, and I think it's sort of the goal that we should have, so...
To Jim's point, though, having some, even if it changes, having some, a little more thought, the ability to think about some of these things in advance a little bit more before ending up at the meeting or the Friday before trying to figure it out. I don't know, I know it will change. I'd be, I'd be for more heads up. I think, Libby, you've done that a couple times, and if I didn't answer the email, I apologize. But I saw it, and it was helpful.
And it's also, it's all, it's, you're asking, also, you're asking some staff that are pretty busy and flat out in a lot of other ways, to stop and sort of try to find another half hour a week to send something out. That's, you know, so I think it's a, if it's a big issue, like, oh, jeez, this is on the horizon.
Yeah.
You know, look, you know, we're going to, you know, we may have Academy Hill leases coming in a couple weeks, guys. I think big issues like that, I, I could see it being more appropriate. But I think kind of knowing what everything's going to be in the next four weeks, it doesn't, sitting in on the agenda meetings, it doesn't really work like that. A lot of times, you're waiting for information from people, they haven't given it yet. You're waiting for town council to get back, you're waiting for something else. It's, it's not quite as, you know, it's, it, it would be great if it were like set in stone, but it doesn't really run that way yet. So I think it's a goal to get to, but do you want to comment, Libby?
I just, we can definitely work on that, and we can get something out to you more regularly, but we have come a long way. When I first started working here, you got the packet at the meeting.
I think we...
Straw.
All right, is, let's end it on that. Do I have a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right.